Okay, good evening everybody and tonight our candidates here for the Motu Kaerangi Eastern Ward are here, who are joining us all remotely and in studio and making this lovely night all work. But with every election, there's one thing stepping in their way and that's your vote. Sorry, hold on a moment, it's meant to have opening credits here. I don't know why the opening credits have just completely disconnected themselves from the system. Well, that is a lot of fun. No, 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 it's a different one. We will suddenly have opening credits going there. That file was in there three hours ago, but XSplit has been playing around a little bit. So we're going to go opening credit list for tonight and we will be joined by all our brilliant candidates who are sitting in here and joined with my co-host Laura. How is everyone this evening?
Pretty good.
We're good.
Okay, so the great part is I do have my random list order generator. So we'll start off first with opening statements. Each candidate gets a one-minute opening statement and Rob, you get to go first.
How did that work out?
Oh, you know what computer programs are like.
Very good. Do you want, when do you want me to start?
Go now.
Uh, right, I'm Rob Gordon. I'm running for the Motu Kaerangi Eastern Ward as a councillor. I'm also one of the mayoral candidates in 2025. Our council faces serious issues in terms of its finances and it needs new leadership. I regard councillors as leaders of their local wards and I'm running in the ward as well. I know how a council works and more importantly, how it should work and it's not working very well at the moment. If elected, my pledge to you as a councillor is that I will listen to Wellington and be a champion for the city on a ward basis and in the mayoralty. I'll grow the city's economy by focusing on things we are good at, like the film industry, making Wellington the arts, culture and entertainment capital of New Zealand, developing our Wellington as an IT hub, focusing on tourism and focusing on our centres of education such as the two universities. And there's a lot of other issues I want to look at.
Okay, thank you for that. Rob, next up, Chris, your opening statements.
Hey everyone, can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Absolutely lovely. Kia ora, I'm Chris Kelvey-Freeman. I'm an Eastern Ward resident, a lifelong Eastern Ward resident and fan of Wellington. I was a councillor 2016 to 2019. We've got a lot done in that era and since then I've been watching with mounting dismay as party politics, as personality politics, as squabbles and scandal have taken away the emphasis of Wellington's image itself. We need to redress that. We need councillors who are sensible councillors, who will listen to each other and listen to the community and want to get things done, not elevate themselves to a role in parliament, but actually to achieve something for Wellington and that's what I want to do. 2016, 2018 through Let's Get Wellington Moving, we had, I've gone down in this, I see the timer now, I'm sorry. 2016 to 2018, we had a plan forward with Let's Get Wellington Moving. The last two try and year, let that slip away. Let's get that back, let's get the good things back.
Okay, okay, next up, my name's Sake Sam.
Kia ora to everyone, my name's Sam O'Brien, I'm the Labour candidate for the Eastern Ward. I live in Hatai Tai and my background, I work as an environmental and urban planner. So I think we can all agree that Wellington is a great place to live, but we really can't hide from some of the big challenges that we have both as a city and as a council. I've been out there, my campaign, talking to people all across the east, they understand the issues. It's really hard to afford a home, our infrastructure is broken, rates are going through the roof and there's a lack of jobs and a general sense that Wellington's not doing that well. And I think we got in this situation by kicking the can down the road on some of these big issues and that's why, that's my reason for running. I want to see a proactive council with new ideas, get works together to tackle some of those really big issues that people in the Eastern Ward care about. Thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you for that Sam. Next up, just once I get my list on there, we've got Thomas. You're all good to go.
Oh, hi, there's Thomas Morgan here. I'm like the others standing for the Eastern Ward. I have been working and observing and occasionally helping out with council activities here and elsewhere for about 30 years, so I have been keeping my eye on things. I've been using, whoops, excuse me, utilizing my strategic strengths to get things done behind the scenes quite often through proactively looking into issues and sourcing answers and results and people have been using them. I want to try and apply those skills to this job and see what difference I can make to help out. Nothing too exciting, everything is fairly simple with the council, but it has to be done properly. That's where things have been going wrong. Grandiose ideas are not going to work and the restraints of council are quite narrow, but they are vital to keep the city running properly. And we've seen right now, we are seeing right now how badly that is happening at the moment. And I've just finished my minute, thanks.
Okay, and next up Trish.
Kia ora Sam, thank you for this evening. Kia ora ko Trish given aho. I'm standing as an independent candidate for Motu Kaerangi Eastern Ward. I'm originally from Ireland, but I've been living in Wellington with my family for the past 16 years. And when I first got here, I didn't know very many people and that's when I started getting involved in volunteering with community groups and community centres. And it was how I got to know my neighbours and my community and where my kids were going to grow up. I've also spent many years working in community development and governance, local government, education, small business and social enterprise. And I'm standing for council because I really deeply care about the future of our city and its residents and I want to help shape it in a way that truly reflects the values, needs and hopes of the people who live here. And I bring strong leadership, collaboration, communication skills and a, and a deep understanding of how communities flourish and function. I've worked across all sectors, as I said, from grassroots to council and I know how to get things done, even when it's complex and challenging. And I'm a creative problem solver, leading with both integrity and heart. So it would be a huge privilege for the opportunity to represent my community as a community leader, as a councillor. Kia ora, thank you.
Okay, and next up Johnny.
Kia ora ko, so my name is Johnny Osborne and I am running for Motu Kaerangi Eastern because I love this place and I feel really lucky that my family is able to call it home. I've got the skills and the experience needed to be an effective councillor, I've got a background in law and water policy, I've been a stay-at-home dad, I've been a volunteer tree planter, a sports person and lately a kid's sports coach. And all of these experiences have given me valuable lessons if I'm elected to council. If I am elected, my priorities will be better transport options, fixing our water infrastructure, a fairer housing system and a healthier environment. If you want a councillor that's committed to working hard every day to make Motu Kaerangi and Wellington a better place for everyone, then I'm your man. Vote one, Johnny Osborne, kapai, thanks.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you for that with candidates there. Okay, we get to the fun run of questions. So how things work here on It's in the Ballot is that we have question boxes. Now today, the question boxes are virtual, but they effectively work the same way. Candidates choose between box number one and box number 28 or what question, what box they would like to pick and then they answer the question that's in the box. Now each candidate is given two button cards and one defer card. They are virtual in this scenario. So if a candidate wants to put in a button, they just type button into the chat and myself and Laura will sit down there and notice that. And as you probably have heard from the timer, was it you got a 15-second warning before your one minute is up? So on our lovely random list order sheet, Trish, you get to go up first. What box number would you like?
Um, 11 please.
11, okay, so that's good. Uh, was it 11 and I will flick things, I don't remember what's it called in the South 2. OBS stream, that's the one I want. God, this is always a lot of fun trying to make everything all line up. Okay, so box 11. And that is letter X, X for X-ray. I have found that the councillors who have done the most for me are wards I cannot vote for them as they are standing in upper wards. Should we abolish wards and make all councillors elected at large like upper house?
Um, I think that while at-large elections give, large elections give voters more choice, wards provide localized representation, connections and equity and they create a clear community link between councillors and the residents they serve, which I think is a big difference maker. And that said, when councillors make decisions, they should always consider the wellbeing of the entire city, not just their ward. So I would love to keep the wards. I believe that that's a very powerful thing that we have in our pocket and that's how we know our communities and our neighbours, because we're accessible in so many ways by, by being here and knowing the people that we are amongst. And I think that's a very, very powerful thing, which maybe would get lost if it was a much wider, a much wider scope that we were, we're dealing with as councillors and we can advocate better as well as councillors for the, those in our community. So yeah, I would keep it.
Okay, next up Johnny. Oh, that's the one I want. What box number?
I'll take box number 16, thank you Sam.
16 and, okay. So Wellington City Council provide, oh, I'm sorry, I've actually got to mention the number so Laura knows what I'm going for, R for Romeo. Wellington City Council provides tactical tiles or footpaths to assist users who are visually impaired to know where it's safe to cross the road and what type of crossing they're using. Is this a core function of Wellington City Council or a nice-to-have?
That's absolutely a core function. Safer streets means safer streets for everybody, no matter your age or your ability. And if tactile tiles help visually impaired people get around our community in a safer and more helpful way, then yeah, 100%.
Okay, that's nice, short, sharp and sweet, okay. Uh, what's, what's the list here? Sorry, this is what happens when there's too many things on screen. Sam, what box number?
Uh, should we go 25?
25, okay, 25. Spending needs to be within, within budget without increasing rates. What luxuries, what services or luxuries would you stop?
Um, so one thing I think where we can make a difference in people's rates across the city is reducing our reliance on contractors and looking to in-source a lot of our services. As we all know, with Wellington Water, we paid three times more than other councils across the country for our water leaks. So I think bringing services in-house, we can, we can make a lot of savings. And I think we should start by looking at simple areas, whether that's traffic management or things like cleaning, and then we can look at how we expand that to other things. But I also think in terms of the budget, we should look at it as a whole and we should look at other opportunities to make savings and really sort of invest in other things, like things like regional deals and other ways of funding infrastructure.
Okay, thank you for that. Next up, Chris, what box number?
I'll take 18 please.
18. Okay, what budget line items would you remove to help bring down rates without disrupting basic services?
Right, everybody wants what everybody wants. I think you have to divide things into the absolutes, the transport, the roads, the drainage and maintaining our assets at the moment, the assets we've got, maintaining them well. Everything else is a nice-to-have and you have to look at them individually. More important than just slicing one budget item off at a time is looking to see, can we do more with less money? Can we contract more effectively? Can we monitor our contracts more effectively? Instead of saying, no, let's do this one badly and this one badly and we won't do this one at all. Let's do this one well and this one well and see if we've got the money to do this one as well. How's that?
And within time. Uh, Thomas, what box number would you like?
Oh, lucky number eight, there we go.
Lucky number eight, so let's get on to number eight, okay. Uh, W for whiskey. How will you restore confidence with rate payers in the city?
Golly gosh, that's a huge mission. I don't know if I could do that. I have an idea really to expand the communication process with the rate payers and to make councillors much more accessible. And I'm just working on that at the moment, so I'm just not quite sure how that's going to look. But I think that will help a great deal. Also to get a far better handle on what people actually want through various processes of consultation that are much more accessible and easier to deal with than what we've got right at the moment. So the people's voice really should carry what the people want and should generally speaking, provide what people want as well. Sounds a little bit grandiose, but it's fairly simple. So that's about my idea on that one.
Thank you for that, okay. Rob, oh, no, 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 that's the wrong number one. Rob, what box number?
What have I got there, seven, that'll do.
We can do you seven? Okay, what is, what's your biggest priority for the next term and how do you intend on delivering that?
My biggest priority for both roles, I think we all understand the financial situation the council's in and it's unsustainable. The rates have increased nearly 52.6% in the last three years alone and that's, we just can't do that. It's not fair to the people on fixed incomes, whether they be elderly or on benefits etcetera, and people on low wages, it's just not verbal. So it's a question, how do we fix that? We get a new council, whoever makes that up. And I think we have a common agreement that the, the finances are the, I mean, if they're not sorted out, that limits, limits future councils as to what they do. So the priority is to reduce that debt and there's a number of ways to do that and I haven't got enough time to answer you, but a common agreement across the board that that is the main focus for a wee while until we sort the council out.
Okay, now we've managed to have six questions asked so far, let's get to another round in a new order. Chris, you get to go up first.
I've, I've just given you a button on that one, so I guess I can talk to that one. Has that come up on your screen?
Yeah, that has come in, yeah, no, I didn't see the chat icon pop up, but yes, your question, put it, button your answer.
I'd like to butt in on Rob's answer, excellent answer, but very general. The simple, the single biggest thing I think we can achieve, and it's only one thing, but it's very important for the eastern suburbs, is to make sure that we hold the Minister of Transport to his promise, the second Mount Victoria Tunnel gets built with spades in the ground in this parliamentary term and more important or equally important, we make sure that it has good walking and cycling facilities for everyone. The current tunnel is a hellhole and we need to do much better. If we are, if we and NZTA are serious about sustainable transport, then we need to have pedestrians and walking available there as well.
Don't disagree with you, Chris.
Thank you.
Just before we go, I've got a cheeky little joke here. Do you believe Zulu Kilo Papa India Golf will be landing at Wellington Airport before the next election?
Is that Air Force One?
Who's that?
Uh, so Zulu Kilo is a New Zealand registered plane and Papa India Golf is the phonetic alphabet for pig. Do you think that's going to be landing at Wellington Airport soon over the Mount Victoria Tunnel?
I don't care who lands at Wellington Airport, with the possible exception of the Tangerine Tyrant, I'm not keen to see him here.
Okay, so Chris, what box number would you like?
Oh, I had 18 last time, is 17 gone?
Uh, 17's still there, let's go for number 17. And I've got a press secretary there. Do you think Wellington could create a household waste collection to stop organic waste going to the landfill?
Look, this is Iona Panet's, this is Iona Panet's baby. I love Iona Panet dearly, she's been a stalwart of environmental activism for many, many years and I was sorry to see her leave the council. But we've got to do things we can afford and we've got to look at the best bang for bucks. Is picking up our organic waste by truck and trucking it off somewhere else a better use of our money and a better way to help the environment? Maybe instead we should give free compost bins to anyone that wants them in the suburbs and encourage them to compost their own stuff like we do at home. And maybe something different for people in apartments, maybe a community compost station, big bin somewhere. But having these trucks go round and round, picking up everyone's little bits of compost every week and shoving them in a bin and trucking them off somewhere doesn't seem to me to be very logical, I'm sorry.
Fair enough. Uh, Rob, what box number?
Let's call it lucky five, shall we?
Lucky five, yes, we've got lucky five there, let's kick off lucky five. Do you think the council should proceed with the $116 million Golden Mile project as currently approved? Or should it reconsult with businesses and perhaps update the design?
Um, it's not $116 million, it's $150 million. And I have publicly said as a mayoral candidate, and I'll say it as a councillor, no to that project, we cannot afford it at the present time. We're 1.6 billion in debt net already and people, look, the surveys say about 87% of people, I did a video on it, on the whole issue, 87% of people went and said they don't want it. The, not only that, three years of disruption to do it and a lot of the businesses don't want it because with that, or will, they won't develop and that sort of thing and open up new stuff and they desperately need to. They won't do it because of the uncertainty around that particular project. It's a vanity project, make no mistake about it. And I don't think Wellington needs it, we've got a good transport system going through there now.
Okay, Sam, what box number?
Do we have 21 left?
21, the good old voting age when my grandma versus voted in 1949? Okay, and actually I've got to ask what the question is, we don't want to just know how old my 97-year-old grandma, what year she voted in. There's been much media coverage about behaviour towards, about candidates' behaviour towards their fellow candidates. What personal values make you suitable to be a councillor?
Cool, so yeah, I think there's a couple of things there. First of all, like any sort of unacceptable behaviour like we've seen from some people on council should absolutely be called out and I think that's the job of other councillors, call it out when it happens. Been proud of one of the Eastern Ward councillors, Tiago Neil, for calling out that abuse towards women, but also abuse towards our council staff on a, things that I'll bring to the table. I'm willing to work with anyone on council. When, as soon as the nominations came out, I reached out to all the candidates here because I think it's about, if you're elected as an Eastern Ward councillor, it's about getting outcomes for Eastern Ward, working together with everyone is going to be a reality, whether you agree or disagree with their politics. So that's kind of, that's my stance on, of working with them, thanks.
Okay, thanks for that. Thomas, what box number?
Oh, I think the number everybody wants, number one.
Number one, oh yes, certainly a good one on the cards there, okay. Should some streets in Newtown, I do know that it's outside the constituency, but it's a, it's an example, or other heritage inner city suburbs be put back into character pre-seeds? Example, Green Street in Newtown is one of the oldest and continuously intact streets.
Um, well, I'd say probably yes, depending on the general view of the population, of the residents of Wellington, what they want to, of course. But I was having this conversation with someone today about how heritage is not just a physical place or a building, but it's actually part of people's actual personal heritage and it can be quite significant to retain that. Provides people with a sense of wellbeing and a sense of place. So I'm all for that happening and if it works out okay for actual sustainability, then it's a great idea. Yep, thanks.
Okay, next up, we've got Johnny, what box number?
I'll take box number four, thanks Sam.
Okay, will you ensure that homeless and rough sleepers are provided with safe and suitable accommodation?
Look, to be honest, in the year 2025, the fact that we have rising numbers of rough sleepers and homeless people is shameful and I think we should all be ashamed of that and we probably all are ashamed of that. Unfortunately, we've got a government that's stepping back in that front and we are seeing rising numbers. I went and talked to a bunch of businesses in Kilkenny a couple of weeks ago and I'd say two out of three of those businesses said nothing, more people were doing it tough. So yes, we have to do what we can to help. I would support the continued upgrade of the council's social housing network that is underway, has begun already. The other thing that's really frustrating is there's five empty Kangaora sites in the ward. Five of them that are shuttered, they, they have no one living in them, it's frustrating. So I would work with absolutely anyone to try and get housing on those sites because any housing is better than shuttered and unused housing.
Okay, uh, Trish, what box number? Trish, you're on mute.
Sorry, can I take number three please, if it's still available?
Number three?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. I understand there has been discussions about potentially introducing commercial rates for properties operating short stay accommodation such as Airbnbs. Could you please clarify whether dual key granny flat residential properties with one unit occupied by the owner, primary resident and the other rented out would fall into the? Would you support this type of property being classified as commercial under the proposed commercial rates?
Um, no, I wouldn't. I said if one spot is owner occupied and the other is occasionally rented, it's still residential in nature. It's not commercial. And I would advocate that these properties remain as rated as residential, recognizing their contribution to housing supply as well. And that's without triggering any higher commercial rates for the people involved. So yeah, that's my answer. Thank you.
Okay. So now we've had twelve que- uh, questions from candidates.
We have a button. Sam, we have a button from Chris.
Go here, Chris.
I thought you said Sam. No, uh, yes, I, I want to butt in on this one. Um, I went to bat on behalf of some of these owners of these, uh, properties, the short stay properties. Because I felt what the council was planning to do was very unfair. They are separating out into two categories. Um, councillors were saying that short term residential is a commercial proposition, it should pay commercial rates. Well, long term rental, and there are big landlords involved, is also a commercial operation seeking to make profit, but they don't pay commercial rates. That's point number one. Point number two, if long to, if the short term accommodation providers are made to pay commercial rates, they will simply go out of business and all the money that the city council sends to Reader or Wellington, New Zealand, it's called now, to try and encourage people to come to Wellington as visitors will be undermined by this decision because it's one more thing that they can't do in terms of accommodation options. So it was silly. The third thing very quickly is they plan to spend a hundred thousand dollars of rate payer money to chase up these, uh, recalcitrant, um, uh, short term accommodation, accommodation providers, which are mainly older mums and dads and people like that, not me. Uh, and, um, there was no- nothing in the, in the paper about how effective it was going to be or how they were going to do it. So I, they've, they've passed it, but I think they're shamed by it. They're shamed by what they heard from me and others. And I think they're going to kick it into the long grass. So whether it applies to dual units or single units is probably immaterial. I think we have to have another look at it in the new, uh, trainium.
Okay.
We have a button from Rob Golden.
When you're ready, Rob?
Yeah, I, um, got asked about that about a year ago. I was at a conference, uh, with a whole lot of those people. It was at, um, the, the B and B stuff. The, the problem when you get into that and you start talking about commercial rates, remember that most, um, cities in New Zealand are between, uh, two point one, the, the rates differential is about two point one to two point eight across all New Zealand citizens, uh, cities. Wellington is three point seven point one, the highest in the country. And that would, I think that would put an unfair burden on those, on those, uh, very small businesses. Quite unfair.
Okay, uh, thanks for that, Rob. Okay, let's get to the next, uh, round of, uh, questions. Thomas, you get to go first.
Numbers side here again?
Sorry?
We're doing the numbers again?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um.
There's lots in the twenties?
Lot in the twenties. Twenty two.
Twenty two?
Twenty two.
Okay. So what's in box number twenty two? Do you support the new disability bathroom complex in Taranaki Street and why or why not?
Um, I have to say I don't know much about it, so I'm not sure, but, um, anything to do with disabilities and improving the, uh, livability of the city in that regard, I'm all for it. So I'd have to say yes in a short answer and, um, to be a bit longer, I would say that we need probably to make sure all of the bathrooms in Wellington are disability, um, available. And I think they probably are in fact, but, um, there can never be enough of them. So all the more, the better. Thanks.
I, I don't think you've been to the toilet block up in Kingston. I wouldn't call those bathrooms accessible. But, um, but I'd say that, but that's quite an old set itself. Uh, we have a button from Rob.
Yeah, um, I've had a good look at a lot of those facilities all around the city. We, um, have got, uh, places like on our transport routes, for example, the Strathmore terminus and other terminuses that our public transport use that haven't got any toilets, um, at all, uh, for the drivers. And that, um, poses all sorts of problems. The, the justification for spending two point four million dollars on a, uh, yes, they might be accessible, but then all toilets should be. Um, uh, uh, on, uh, one toilet block of five, uh, five, uh, cubicles is just beyond me. Half a million dollars each. I mean, even if you look at the, um, uh, uh, the price of building, uh, I mean, you just divide that and, and, and have a look at the cost of that trajectory. I think it's way over the top and, um, it's the sort of overspending that we don't need. That's not to say that we don't need toilets in a lot of other places and there's other priorities. And someone's just described Kingston as a, as a shocking place. We need them all over the city, but not at that, not at that price tag.
Yes, paper and contractors like me do have a lot of fun trying to find toilets. We're delivering our papers between midnight and six AM that are unlocked. Ironically, Kingston are the ones that actually are unlocked. But yes, as I say, I wouldn't call them accessible. Um, and Rob, you get the next box number.
What's left there, uh, Sam?
Uh, we've got much of the twenties and some of the teens.
Some of the teens. Okay, let's, let's go for lucky thirteen, shall we? Or unlucky?
Okay, thirteen. Should the city to sea bridge be saved? Yes or no? And you're welcome to use the remainder of your time for why?
Um, a- absolutely, it should be saved. It's a public work of art that was built. And I think I, I did look at the plaque a few weeks ago. We made a video of it. That's on my Facebook page. It's a beautiful structure. There's no real need to remove that. And it's a fan. There's very little, um, safe access across to the waterfront, which we all know is, is the, the night I went there and did the video, we were watching Homegrown with about fifteen to twenty thousand people on the waterfront. And what a view and what a place that is. And, um, what an, it's actually an incredible piece of work. I don't think that should be removed. Uh, and I'm, there is no engineering reason for doing so. And for me, it stays. It's a public work of art.
Okay. Uh, next up, Johnny, what box number?
Uh, I'll take twenty three. Thanks, Sam.
Okay. Oh, I don't, I want that one there. And let's get in there. Wellington has a goal to cut our annual carbon pollution by fifty seven percent by twenty thirty. What's the single's biggest action you could do to halve the city's emissions in the next five years?
Yeah, I think, um, if you look at the, the city's, um, climate pollution profile, about half of our climate pollution comes from transport. So focusing on the transport area is going to have the biggest bang for buck. And focusing on the buses is going to have the biggest bang for buck within that. So the biggest, um, two things, I think. One is making sure our buses are faster and more reliable. So for, for us out in the east, that's bus priority measures along the number two route, mostly through Rongatai, Kiburni, Hitaitai, where it really gets snagged up in the morning. Uh, and it's creating a second spine, a second transport route along the Harbour Keys to make sure we avoid any gridlock, um, in the city. And then the second aspect of that is making sure that the public transport options are cheaper. Well, I've talked to a lot of people and they say we get together with two people, it's, it's cheaper to take a car. And that's the wrong thing to go about it. So we've got to look at things like a weekly fare cap, um, discounts for people in lowering, et cetera, to make sure that, uh, the logical choice.
Okay. And we have a button from Sam.
Cool. Um, yeah, I would agree with a lot of what Johnny just said there. Um, as he says, transport, I think it's fifty six percent of our emissions, uh, in Wellington. Um, and so, yeah, he's right. On one hand, we need to, um, make public transport the most, um, attractive option for people. And that is, that is through, uh, making our trips quicker. People talk to me and say that, um, you know, getting from the, the far parts of the east like Setun, um, can be a, can be a struggle, can take a while. Um, also the other side of the equation is locating more development. Um, you know, close to services and things that people need so that, that reduces the amount of trips they need to take. Um, and helps reduce emissions overall. So I think coming at it from both sides, public transport and housing development, um, is a really good option.
Okay. And while we're still there, Sam, you get the next box number. What would you like it to be?
Uh, do we have twenty eight left?
Uh, yes, we do have twenty eight. Okay, let's get on to a question. In Wellington, we've had huge rate increases in the last few years at a ti- at a time cost of living crisis and public set the cuts. Many council projects such as the Old Town Hall renovation went from thirty million to three hundred and thirty million and have been poor expenditure. And for example, as council signed an agreement with central government on the social housing, that's costing the city another two hundred million. A third example has been Taquina, the convention centre, hasn't covered operating costs. Then there's the millions that were spent on let's get Wellington moving consultants and consult, but only delivered a roundabout at a pedestrian crossing. Meanwhile, only six hundred and fifty metres of water pumps have been replaced last year. According to this question submitter, what will you do to stop all council expenditure and allocate resources to critical and rain, at rain and huge increases?
Yeah, well, that's a lot, lot, lot there. But, um, I think, yes, the, the general consensus is that we do need to focus on infrastructure. Um, that's something that people care about and it's something that has a tangible impact on people's lives. Um, I guess the thing I would, sort of, I covered some of that in my earlier response, but, um, one thing I want to focus on, um, is an issue we might have with our water infrastructure uh, and the setup of a new, uh, water entity, Metro Water. Um, so rate payers will be receiving a second bill and that could put a lot of pressure on, on households throughout the city. Um, so I think what we need to do is make sure that that new water entity is accountable in terms of affordability, but also in terms of environmental outcomes. Um, so I'm committed to setting up a water charter. Um, that sets a really strong expectation, uh, on that water entity, that that should be the focus of what they do. Um, and that might involve things like Commerce Commission regulation and Tomata Aruwa installation on the environmental side of things.
Okay. And I think, uh, Rob, you've read what Laura sent. Yep, you've used up all your buttons.
Yeah, oh, well, that's the way it is.
Uh, Trish?
That's the rules.
Um, can I have twenty seven if it's still available, please?
Yes, you can have twenty seven. If elected, will you decelerate council spending on unwanted great, uh, green projects and concentrate on vital, necessary infrastructure needed such as roading?
Um, sorry, I'm just trying to find my answer for that one. I, I said, it, as councillors, like are, um, any decision on major projects or infrastructure priorities have to be made collectively and will be made collectively around the council table? And it's with a focus on what delivers the greatest benefit for our residents. And I alone cannot make that decision or choice and would need to be backed up with that expertise, a full understanding of the budgets allocated. And, um, I think robust discussions to best ensure the, um, outcome for the city. And I, as, as I see it as well, like as councillors, our role is governance, making informed and, um, evidence based decisions for the good of the city and relying on expert advice, weigh community needs and work through a consensus process around the council table to make that type of a decision.
Okay. Uh, next up, Chris, what box number?
Ooh, uh, look, I'll, I'll have number two because, uh, I think everyone likes a good number two.
So certainly right when using STV, you have got that bang smack on the money there. Uh, yes, and the number twos are just as important as the number ones when it comes to, because that's helped decides who get, uh, help, helps the redistribution. Uh, so, uh, was it T for Tango? What difference, uh, no, what do you see as the main difference between Maori landowners and hapu in the terms of their relationships with Wellington City Council?
Look, I think this may be a loaded question. Um, I doubt whether anyone, uh, participating in this would have a, a ready answer to this. I'd given it some thought. Uh, I think this may relate back to what happened with Shelly Bay, where the council in good faith, um, uh, liaised with, uh, the, um, uh, Taranaki Fanoi, uh, who were represented by Port Nicholson Lock Settlement Trust, who are effectively the landowner and were the landowner at, at ninety percent of Shelly Bay. And I think what happened there is after that negotiation was almost concluded, uh, it, uh, what came up was some disagreement from various hapu within that iwi that they were not being adequately represented by Port Nicholson Trust. So I think there's a very difficult question to answer straight out. Uh, I'd need to look more into what the, uh, submitter has in mind and what their, their actual, uh, problem is and see if we could help with that.
Thank you, thank you for that. Okay. So we've managed to get to eighteen questions so far. And we're going to see if we can try and get another six out of our candidates and some more buttons because not everyone's used their buttons. Um, Chris, you get to go up first. What box number?
Oh, another one. I did two before, so I, I've had a good two, so I'm going to have a three now.
Oh, I'm sorry, taken.
Oh, I'll have a four then.
No.
I have five, six. Let's have six.
Six.
He says six.
Not six, six. We can have six.
I was just going to say.
Yeah. Okay. What, what is your plan to address the infrastructure issues with Wellington's water, Wellington's water infrastructure, not the Wellington Water CCO?
God, I get all the hard ones, don't I? Honestly, um, not something that can be answered in one minute. Basically, we've got to watch out that we don't replace one, um, inward looking, ineffective, overpriced unit with another one that's just the same. One of the big problems with the Metro Water thing will be that Wellington City will only get one vote. Uh, it's like the, um, the Regional Transport Committee that runs, uh, to look at long term transport planning. Wellington City, every territorial authority gets one vote. And in that particular case, Wharapua got three votes, Wellington City gets one. In the case of Metro Water, we'll get one, Porua get one, Uppahut, Lower Hut. And, um, is that fair? Is that reasonable? Are we just taking one thing out and putting in another committee with maybe the same people? And, uh, without any further advantage. I haven't got an answer on that one. It's something I'm going to have to look into and, and read up about. I've got to admit, uh, but it's a huge question. It'll make a big difference to, uh, how much rates people pay and how effectively water is delivered.
Okay. Um, sorry about that. We seem to be a bit laggy here. We've lost our internet connection again.
We can see you.
We can see you. Hello, everyone. Having a good time?
Hmm.
All good so far.
Had you dinner? Right, dinner?
Did you do, you did see me eating my fish fingers.
Good on you, Rob. You've got to feed the inner man.
Oh, you got, okay, it's the first meal I've had all day. Got to eat one again, Chris, to understand the story.
Yeah. Uh, fa- uh, thanks for that, Laura. Yes, it seems to me our four G internet did have a little bit of a, uh, a little bit of a play up in the area, but hey, it's the joys of, uh, what happens when you can't use Starlink. Okay, um, Thomas, you get to go up next. What box number?
Twenty three.
I'm sorry, that's been taken. Do you want twenty four?
That'd be great.
Yeah, I sound like a Scotsman right there.
Half your age, Thomas.
Oh, I can see someone butting it on this one. As a growth engine for Wellington, to ensure the prosperity will be, Wellington must attract growth of businesses and residents. Cycling enables this. Do you commit yourself, uh, commit to the four pillars of growth, promoting cycling and grow, growth, uh, as a growth engine for Wellington? Pro- uh, protect what we have, no removal of cycle lanes. Maintain what we have, look after the existing cycle lanes, build missing links, complete the city network, city, city cycle ways to connect to the network.
All of those options.
Are all of those options? No, probably not.
I was going to say, what do you expect from Patrick Auckland? Because that sounds so much like him.
Um, I, I'm, I really don't know on the cycleway business because it's already in train and it's already either a train wreck in the making or it's the perfect answer to Wellington's transport problems. And I really don't know right now. I've got a policy about this, which I've got to announce a bit later, which will help things to some extent, but, um, right now I don't know. It's just really difficult to say because there's some use of the cycleways, but it's not a lot. And my mantra for years has been that the cycleways are great, but all the feeder roads are not. So there we go. I don't know.
Okay, uh, and as suspected, we have a button from Trish.
Kia ora, um, I would support keeping and improving our cycleways, not ripping them out. If anything, I want to see them look better and making the streets look better as well too. So replacing the broken ballards and making it, um, attractive to people who might be visiting and want to bike around the city to be able to get around safely and securely and enjoy the city as it is. Because we have so many amazing cycleways that are either in progress or have been completed around our coastal areas. And that is such a drawcard and it's so wonderful to see kids and families and everybody out there enjoying them all along. And I said, like, I want to finish off the missing links as well and make, you know, Wellington is safer, safer and healthier and more connected because of this. And I said, of the entire transport budget, cycleways just cost one percent and yet they deliver on safer streets, as I said, healthier communities and better choices for getting around the city for those shorter journeys. It frees up the streets as well too for people that do want to drive around the place. And that's great because not everybody wants to get on a bicycle. But I do believe that it's good value for money for what we're doing and we are being held up in an international level as a, you know, as doing amazing work in this area. And you know what? Everybody says, oh, we're not Amsterdam. Well, do you know what? We're Wellington. We're, we're unique in this respect. And we have something that we can really offer and be held up as a leader in this area.
Okay, and just to let you remind you again, you've used up your two buttons, Rob.
I was looking for a few more.
At least some candidate wants to give you one. Okay, Thomas.
Would, would someone, well, I'm asking for donations, so maybe someone would like to donate one. What about you, Sam? Would you give me one?
Uh, no, you've already been given one. Thomas is giving you one of his buttons. He hasn't used any.
Have you given me one, Thomas? Yeah, just look, just on the cycle lanes, we've spent two hundred and twenty-seven million dollars on it so far. They're planning to spend a hun, another hundred and twenty-seven million dollars on them. The off-road ones are good. Some of them, like the ones along Cobham Drive in the waterfront are absolutely fantastic. And we all know that they followed the scenic route and that sort of thing. But some of them, like in Molesworth Street, someone in Murphy Street, that, uh, and many other places, they are empty and we get hundreds of comments about that. They're poorly designed, they don't need to be there. Why don't we think about it another way? We don't have to bring, uh, build grandiose ones. Hastings, six, seven years ago, spent one point one million, built a hundred k's of cycleways by putting the lanes on the outside of the cars. So why can't we be a little bit smarter with our money as well? We need some good ones, some big ones like the waterfront and that, but some of them badly designed, don't need to be there and all they do is, uh, have forced a lot of angst amongst people.
Okay, uh, next up, Sam, what box number?
I'll let you pick me one, Sam, if you can.
Oh, okay, okay. Uh, let's go for number nine. That's nothing, that's completely useless in many aspects other than just an age number. Okay. So let's kick this off. Auckland Council has recently shifted to taking away recycling bins of people who mix in general waste with their recycling. Should Wellington City Council consider removing recycling bins for the same thing?
No, I don't think we should do that. Um, I think the simple answer there is just to provide a bit more education towards people about what they need to do. I don't think, I think that just led to worse outcomes if we took that away from people. So, yeah, happy to see the council do a bit of education on that, um, and hopefully that would lead to, to some solutions there.
Okay, and put that one back on me. Okay, uh, next up, Trish, what box number?
Oh, what's left, Sam? I can't remember.
How do you like number twelve?
Sure, that'd be grand.
So let's go for number twelve. What political parties are you linked to?
Ah, none, absolutely none. I think that I was running as a true independent when I made the decision, um, to, to, you know, to do this in the first place. I've thought long and hard about it. And I think that based on Wellington's best interests and, and community wellbeing and not having a party alignment is the best way forward at this time for, for myself. And, um, you know, all I want to do is be and listen to the community that I would be representing fully and to know that they were being heard and listened to and that they knew that they would have, uh, a true and voice in, in city council and at the table. So, yeah, no party alignments.
Okay, thanks for that. Rob, what box number?
What's left?
Uh, can give you a number twenty or twenty-six? And I think I've got ten, fourteen and fifteen.
Let's go for fifteen.
Fifteen. The age that, uh, I'd probably say half of our candidates got their driver's licence at.
A quarter of my age.
Yes. Greater Wellington Regional Council is looking at putting bendy buses on, on the number two bus route. Would you support Greater Wellington Regional Council, uh, with traffic resolutions or bus stop changes to ensure the buses can efficiently, uh, work as efficiently as our current rigid large buses? This means making the bus stops longer than what they currently are. I bet there's someone like you.
Yeah, that's a very good question because I, um, you know, I run a business in terms of my security business, but I also drive buses and I know I do that route frequently. Uh, I think that's a very good route to choose for the bendy buses. Just in terms of straight out driving, it's the busiest route in the, in the city. They'll extend some of the bus stops out and that will mean the, the actual step on bit is higher. And it'll make that a lot safer and a lot, uh, better for people with disabilities and that using them. We want lots and lots of people using our buses. Fully electric, we should have a fully electric fleet. And I, I think that I've seen the bendy buses, they've trialled them and that is the perfect route for them. Uh, others won't do it and they won't take the double deckers. So, so that, that's why you don't see double deckers, for example, in Kauri, because of the tunnels.
Yes, so, so true. Now, we have a request from, uh, from Chris. Thomas, would you like to donate your button to Chris Calvey-Freeman, the whole one?
It's getting a bit generous, isn't it, Sam?
I don't know, another candidate could offer.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, so Chris, you've, you've been donated Thomas's button, so now Thomas has no buttons.
Thank you, Thomas. I owe you one for that. Look, I just want to add in and, 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 and Rob is right. Of course, the, the number two is the contender for, uh, for the bendy buses because it has the two tunnels, that's Setun and Kauri, that you won't get the double-decker buses through. They do need a lot longer stops, uh, and that does mean sometimes taking away a bit of resident, residential parking. But if Transport Authority is clever, what it does is it arranges the stops so that you exploit the width of the junction, the intersection as well, so the bus comes straight in to the stop at the end. There are a lot of suburban stops around here and Sarah Free's been asking for years and years for them all to be marked out properly and there's still a lot of them aren't done properly. Yes, let's facilitate the, uh, the bendy buses on that route. Be careful on other routes because they can be a danger to cyclists. But that route, there's a particular advantage in having them and we do need the longest stop for them and that quick entry exit, uh, that you don't get with the double deckers. Thank you.
Okay, and, um, we've got enough of butts in from Trish, but before you go, go to Trish. I remember Sarah actually helped my friend Tony Seymour. Now, any of those know, whenever we go to Hamilton, Tony Seymour puts us up for accommodation. But Tony used to live on Sutherland Road and the same thing happened was the bus stop outside his house did not have lines on it. And they, and Sarah fought and got the lines out there and they resealed the lines. Now, long after Tony left, they resealed the road and forgot to put the lines back. Yeah, so, yeah, so Sutherland Road at Tony's poor bus stop, they used to get out in a wheelchair. It's back to, uh, back to, you know, who knows when the lines start and stop. Now, Trish, let's kick it with your button because I think you live on one of these bus routes.
I do, yeah. I live on the number two bus route. Um, it's just right outside our door and it's like the reason that we chose to live here as well. And I really appreciate what, um, Rob said, you know, as a bus driver, it's amazing to get his, his, um, you know, lens across that. One of the things that concerns me slightly about the, um, bendy buses and I know it will increase capacity for commuters as well and going through the tunnels, that's, that's super great. It's just about safety and especially in areas like Moxam Avenue where cyclists already face challenges and the small, and not just cyclists, that, you know, when you're coming up Moxam Avenue and sometimes you're being passed by buses. And sometimes there isn't the room to just, you know, that, you know, when buses are coming in and if they, you know, on top of you and if they've got an extra length on there as well too. It's something that I've had, you know, just been sitting on my mind for a little while. And also, if you sit in Haitaitai Village on any morning or evening at rush hour and just when it's coming around the small roundabout and with the number of traffic that's backed up, um, Haitaitai Road and Waitoa Road for a short period. But it's just how that's all going. I'd love to see the bendy buses get a test run during those peak hours. I think that would be a really, really great thing to do. But other than that, I like, I fully support it, increasing capacity for commuters and improving public transport access. Also helping to cut emissions and that's, that's what we want at the end of the day.
Okay, and Johnny, you get last box.
Well, I guess I'll take the last box next.
Was it ten, fourteen, twenty or twenty-six?
Twenty-six.
Okay. Wellington ratepayers have been, uh, was it, have had rate hikes, uh, imposed on them of well over thirty percent in the last two years. Given this, what level of annual rates hikes do you think ratepayers can sustain, if any, over the next three years?
Uh, look, um, I mean, I own a property and pay rates and I know that rates have been going up a lot. I know insurance has been going up a lot. I know it's not fun. But I think to be perfectly honest, it would be irresponsible to try and pick a number and stick to it. Because if we do that, what will we end up doing is we'll end up kicking the can down the road on, on issues that need addressing now. And we know what happens when we kick the can down the road. We just need to look at our pipes. We're leaking forty, forty-five percent of the drinking water that we take out of the hut. We're, we're leaking god knows how much sewage and we don't have a stormwater system that's set up to deal with climate change. So we can't artificially keep our rate slow to kick the can down the road and send a bigger bill to the future. Uh, look, I mean, we've got to be prudent with the way we spend. We've got to avoid wasting spending where we can, but look, we have to face the challenges that we have now.
Okay, well, we've gone through, oh, we have a button from Sam. Before we sit there and call, uh, call the box questions up for a night. Sam, what's your button?
Um, just a quick addition to, to what Johnny said there. I think council has a role as well, um, in advocating to central government for, better options for funding our infrastructure and some of these challenges that we've got. The rates that, we, we shouldn't put people in a situation where, um, as a council, we have to choose between infrastructure that works or, uh, rates that are affordable. So, um, yeah, I'd like to see the council advocating to central government. I think there's things on the cards like, um, the ability to, for council to use development levies to fund some of that infrastructure. And we also need to make sure we actually put a bid forward for a regional deal so that we can have some assistance with some of those big infrastructure projects.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, um, let's get ready for hard hitting questions. Oh, here, my stream deck seems to be not wanting to talk at the moment. Ah, I know why it wasn't talking because of what button I was pressing. It's quite heaven's where multiple number ones are in the same place that do different tasks. Okay, hard hitting questions are the questions we ask all candidates to sit there and answer them. They're based on the important issues that the community needs to know where candidates stand. Let's kick off with hard hitting question number one. Is upzoning going to bring more affordable homes? If so, how do you explain all the empty lots that have been upzoned for decades and nothing's been built? It isn't, it, it isn't about good conditions, conditions for developers to build and that, that they want to make money, not create affordability. Now, I've got to get a random list sheet up because I actually haven't done that. And Thomas, you get to go up first.
Very interesting question, Sam, because I don't quite know what upzoning is, so I'm having a little bit of a guess at that, but, um, I'm, I'm, I'm obviously not sure what the answer might be, but, um, if it's something that will help, uh, develop the city and encourage people to live there, that's great. On the streaming, it changes the designation of land to, um, make it, uh, more diverse as far as what can be built on it. So, uh, that could probably be a good idea. Again, it's up to what, uh, other residents around the area might think. And, uh, we really want to keep everybody happy as much as possible. And I know there's been a lot of conflicts going on in Auckland where zoning has changed and, um, taller buildings allowed to be built, so it's, it's a toughie.
Okay, um, Rob, your answer.
I'm, Sam, can you do, I, I'm not familiar with that term, uh, term of upzoning.
Uh, it's changing the designation of the land from a, say, a three-storey height limit to a, say, a six or an eight-storey height limit.
Oh, so you're talking about alterations under the district plan, are you, where sort of?
Yes.
Uh, yeah.
That would be what, that's the best way to describe it.
Yeah, if, if you're talking about things like that and concentrate, if it's along the lines of sort of concentrating, um, housing and that sort of thing, take that example with, I think it was Sam talked to, was it, yeah, Sam talked about it earlier along with the houses in Colburne around the hub there where they're all boarded up. I mean, that, that just lends itself to building, um, uh, an apartment block in terms of, you know, multiple housing right, uh, ride on, uh, a transport. If that's a good example of that, then I think that's a good thing. You know, people ride on transport routes, clean, affordable housing that they can, um, uh, live in. I think, uh, that sort of stuff's good. Why not?
Okay, uh, Trish.
So I think upzoning is an important tool to, to improve housing affordability. And although it's not a silver bullet, a figure without it affordability is much harder to achieve in housing, but it needs to be paired with other measures like land-based, um, land value-based rates to discourage vacant sites like Rob just mentioned. And housing development depends on, on many factors, the land, the build, the finance cost, the timelines, market appetite, lots of different things. And the economic cycle, um, currently means that many projects just don't stack up financially, leaving land unused. And it's a complex issue and I don't think it can be resolved easily and quickly. And politicians need to balance expert advice with community concerns and recognizing that addressing those concerns and enabling upzoning can only go, um, like hand in hand. And, uh, yeah, unlike simplistic calls for more standalone houses, I think, yeah, thank you.
No problem. Okay, uh, Sam.
Yeah, so upzoning does absolutely, um, unlock more affordable housing. It allows for more supply, um, which brings down costs overall. Um, and it also allows for high density and smaller homes to be built, which by definition are cheaper. A lot of my mates live in townhouses. A lot of my mates live in townhouses, which are, are cheaper. Um, but yeah, no, as the question suggests, um, it's not a magic book, a bullet, and it needs to be supported by a lot of other things. Um, so that's strong infrastructure. Um, we need incentives like Trish Newton, demand value rates. Um, and we also need to be supporting, uh, demand. So the revitalization and regeneration of urban centers, um, will encourage demand to be able to live in places. Um, and then we'll encourage developers to have that certainty to build. Um, and so, yeah, we've got some policies around that in terms of an urban development office, uh, and faster consenting processes as well. Um, to, to help developers and realize some of those, uh, gains from upzoning.
Okay, uh, Chris.
Oh, look, uh, upzone, upzoning is, is, is part of the solution, but it's by no means the most important part of it. Getting more houses built, uh, is all a matter of economics and also about the willingness of the city council not to put barriers in the way. Now, you can zone as much as you like to allow more houses in a particular area. But if the cost of the land is too expensive, it won't happen. Um, in other areas, you're going to find it will happen. Um, people, uh, housing is, is basically a free market thing. And as I said, it's the economics that will determine it more than the upzoning. Um, I'm all for upzoning around transport hubs as, as Rob, um, said. Uh, but apart from that, it's, it's not an easy answer to, it's not a panacea to bring housing prices down. It's as simple as that.
Okay, um, Johnny.
Uh, I think, um, slightly contrary to what Chris might have just mentioned, I think the evidence across, across the world demonstrates that cities that are more permissive for upzoning do generally have more affordable housing options. Um, and that's one part of it. And this council has changed that significantly. So they, I think they've grown it about fivefold across the city. Uh, we kind of need to see that bed in, see what, what effect it has. But I think the other part, um, that will play a big part is the way we do rates. And I'm pleased to hear Trish and Sam are both supportive of our policy to do land value rates instead of the capital rates. And that will really have an impact on those empty lots. Cause all of a sudden the rates for a car park are the same as the rates for an apartment building. So there's a much better incentive to use that empty lot in a much more effective and efficient way. And agree with Rob and other points that were made. It's really important to do that along the main transport spines. So that if you are living in an apartment, you can rely on other forms of transport.
Okay, uh, let's get ready for hard hitting question number two. Do you think party politics at WCC should come before Wellington and its rate pads? Yes or no? And why? Chris.
No. Now I could leave it at that, but I'll give you a couple of examples. Um, I presented to the city council, I think, three times over the last few years on various issues. And I could, I would have bet a thousand dollars each time as to how the councillors were going to vote. And it was along party lines. I went along there as other people have done with well-prepared material. And some of the councillors don't even look up. They know that they're going to vote along the party line already, regardless of what I or other constituents say. So is that a good thing? Others are trying to position themselves to get into, um, parliamentary positions. Um, and others are making statements. We had to, we had to discuss the future of let's get Wellington moving. When I say we, that was after I was on council. And the council spent more time talking about a friendly relationship with Romala on that particular council meeting than it did about whether it would support the ongoing future of let's get Wellington moving.
Okay, um, Thomas.
Um, I'm very blunt on this. No is my answer. And I'm very, very adamant about that because I think it's got some very major problems with it in distorting the process of democracy. I think central government should actually make it unlawful for parties to be present during local body, uh, elections. And some assessment perhaps on people's backgrounds might be needed to even eliminate that, but that could be a bit extreme. Um, and there are some very serious reasons about this. Uh, Chris has mentioned them in, in part to do with actual decision-making. And even this, uh, election process we're in right now is heavily distorted by party politics and should be, uh, abolished. There we go.
Okay, uh, Rob.
Yeah, I, I think party politics, uh, forget the color of the tie I'm wearing tonight, it's got nothing to do with my, my, uh, political colors are black and gold. They're about Wellington. And I don't think party, uh, politics play or should play any part in local government. There are good points of view on all sides of the spectrum, if you like. And, um, I'm happy to listen to those and work collegially with people on those. So that we end up with the very best pragmatic decisions, sensible decisions, cost-effective decisions, uh, that make the city a better place. And, um, I think, I think it's a problem if you're ideologically driven or you have to vote the way your party tells you. That takes away your individual freedom as a councillor, you know, to, to, uh, to listen and to act on what your constituents say. So, uh, that's ultimately what you're there for. You're elected on a ward basis and, um, to represent those people and, and that's what you should do. That's what you swear an oath to do under the local government act.
Okay, uh, Sam.
Cool. Uh, yeah, so I don't think party politics should become, uh, come before Wellington and its rapers. Um, I'm committed, um, as a Labour candidate to putting the eastern ward first. Um, solving the issues that we have here. That's my number one priority. Um, but I do think that council, um, is altex. Everyone here has political stances. Um, people might be members of political parties, I'm not sure. Um, but I'm being upfront with my political, uh, values and things that I believe in. Um, and yeah, I think, I think that's fine. Um, and I would also add that on the last council term, um, the Labour councils on council currently have voted differently, um, on many different issues.
Okay, uh, Trish. Oh, you're on mute, Trish.
Sorry, sorry about that. Um, so no, I, Wellington's needs must come first. I'm an independent by choice, as I said earlier as well. And because I believe decisions should be based on what delivers the best results for the city. And being an independent, I can listen to the community with an open mind, weigh up evidence, work collaboratively with everyone and everyone to get the best outcomes. And my focus will always be on local issues, local people and practical solutions to make the city stronger, fair and more resilient. And at the end of the day, whoever ends up at the council table, we all have to work together in a cohesive and supportive way for the betterment of the city. And with, you know, that's, that's the core of what I think. Yeah.
Okay, and Johnny.
If I'm elected, I, I will be working in the best interests of Motu Kainga and of Wellington as a whole. I mean, obviously I'm the Green Party candidate and, um, I'm, I'm proud to be the Green Party candidate. And the reason I am is because my values, climate change, dealing, dealing with climate change, uh, looking a fairer society, looking after, uh, our, um, least fortunate, uh, are values that are similar to, to the parties. And, and I think if I am acting in those, in accordance with those values, I will be acting in the best interests of Motu Kainga and Wellington.
Okay, thank you for that. And now let's get to hard hitting question number three. What is your position on retaining the Tafanganui Atara Maori Ward for Wellington City Council and the Tu'upuku Oteika Maui Maori constituency for Greater Wellington Regional Council? And why do you hold that position? Let's start off with Thomas.
Golly gosh, I always get the easy ones first. Um, I, I really haven't thought about this very much at all. Um, I've spent quite a bit of my life living in Rotorua, um, and I can see some very good values in Maori culture. Um, but on the flip side of that too, uh, democracy really doesn't favor any particular, uh, minority group. So we've got a bit of a contrast there. I really don't know the answer right at the moment. It's, it's a bit of a tricky one. And the open, uh, approach to democracy means that we shouldn't have any favoritism. But then again, we've got the indigenous, uh, population, um, argument as well. So I really think it would be one to leave open to the residents of Wellington to decide for themselves.
Okay, uh, Rob.
Yeah, hi. Um, some might be surprised by my view. The, the treaty of Waitangi is the treaty of Waitangi and that talks about partnership. I have, I've worked on a council where we had memorandums of understanding with the, the two main Iwi groups, the 10th and Na'atatawa. That worked well. Um, I, I think that view, their viewpoint has to be in some way at the council table. True democracy says that we're going out to referendum on that at this election. And I'm sure one way or the other, the public of Wellington, and I'm prepared to wait for that response, will give us an answer on whether they agree with that policy or not. If the majority don't, the majority don't. Um, uh, but that'll be decided by the people of Wellington.
Okay, uh, Chris.
Look, my approach to life has always been to try and see what one side says, see what the other side says, and see what I believe should happen based on the evidence. One side says that we shouldn't have a ward that is racially selected. The other side of that argument is that Maori representation at central, regional and local levels has historically been low. They have been underrepresented. So having, bending that rule from the first side and saying, look, what is the best way to get fair and reasonable representation? As we're obliged to do under the treaty. And if that's Maori wards, then I think that's what we should be having. Simple as that.
I think I'm next. I'm next.
Uh, yes, sorry. We hit a little bit of cracking list on the internet connection. Hence why I typed it up in case we dropped out. So Johnny, you're next.
Uh, I support retaining the Maori wards in the city council and the regional council. And I think fundamentally because it's, um, giving effect to the treaty of Waitangi, which is the founding document of our nation. And unless both sides of the partnership that's formed by that treaty wants to get rid of the wards, I don't think it's the right thing to do.
Okay, uh, Sam.
Yeah, a simple one for me. Um, I'll be voting to keep our Maori wards. Um, there's a few reasons, upholding Te Te Riti. I'm sure we've got Maori representation on the council. It's really important. Um, I think that makes us make better decisions on council. We've got all the viewpoints there. Um, and I see it as no different to in the general election with Maori electorates. Um, I think it's important. Um, and yeah, I'll be voting to keep it.
Okay, and Trish.
I fully support retaining the Maori wards and the Teo Pukou Teika Maui Maori constituency for Greater Wellington Regional Council as well. And so because they ensure meaningful Maori representation and uphold treaty partnerships and, and local decision-making. And these structures give Maori a direct and respected voice at the council table, ensuring decisions are both informed by Tanga de Fenewa, perspectives and the commitment to, to Te Riri, or Te Te Riti or Waitangi. And this isn't just about representation, it's about building trust and making better decisions and creating a city that reflects and respects all its people. And inclusion strengths strengthens our democratic integrity, our cultural richness and our shared future.
Okay, thank you for that and, uh, answering as I believe the one of the most important questions of the local body elections. Here is time for closing statements. Trish, you get to go up first. Your one minute closing statement.
Thank you. Um, so thank you for putting in all this effort, um, Simon Ting. And thanks for everyone online who's been listening in this evening too. And thank you for all my, uh, co-candidates for caring enough, uh, about our city to be a part of this conversation. I think Wellington is a place of incredible potential and the eastern ward is full of people who bring hard talent and resilience to our community. And I want to make sure that those voices are heard loud and clear at the council table. And as a true independent, I'm here to represent you and I'll work hard. I'll ask the right questions and I'll push for decisions that make our neighbourhood safer, fairer and more vibrant. And your vote is your voice. If you want a councillor who listens, collaborates and gets things done with integrity and heart, I'd be honoured to have your support. So, thank you.
Okay, uh, next up, Thomas.
How do you go? Um, yep, thanks very much, Sam, for, uh, making all of this possible and, um, good luck to all the other candidates as well. Um, I'm, uh, really standing just to be able to try and help the city basically recover from the state it's in at the moment. I'm a fresh voice, a fresh, um, view, providing a fresh view of everything. I operate on some fairly stringent principles that, uh, help that. And I've lived here now for 25 years and, uh, I know the council environment very well. I've been to countless meetings over the years, way back in the day when Rob was a, a full force of, uh, council activity. And, um, yeah, I'd be looking forward to your vote. Thanks very much.
Okay, uh, next up, Johnny.
Uh, just echo what, um, Trish and Thomas have said. Thanks very much, Sam and team for putting this on. It's been great. Um, and thanks to the fellow candidates for the interesting and insightful answers, um, to many of the questions. Uh, look, I'll, I'll be, put it real simply. If, if you want a councillor that loves Motu Kainga and the eastern suburbs, loves Wellington and will work hard every day to make it better, to make it fairer, to make it greener. I'm your man. Vote for me. Vote one, Johnny Osborne. Thanks very much.
Okay, uh, next up, Sam.
Cool. Um, so I'll just finish up with my top two priorities for the ward. Uh, number one, infrastructure. We've got to use all avenues to fund our infrastructure upgrades and maintenance. Um, got to get a water charter in to keep our water affordable and get good environmental outcomes. Uh, number two, housing, we've got to pull all the levers we can, um, to make it more affordable. Um, both in the private and in the public space. Um, and finally, uh, the environment and resilience. Um, we've got to have strong infrastructure in the eastern ward, um, to protect us, um, protect our, our people from, um, more storms and flooding. Um, and we need to support some of the great projects like Pretty Free Wellington and Marta Moana. Um, I've worked, um, on a lot of these issues already. Um, and I'm committed to working with anyone, um, on council to get good outcomes for the eastern ward. Cool. Thank you.
Okay, uh, ni- uh, next up, Rob.
Yeah, my, um, I've been on the council before and arguably, arguably, um, one of the most successful councils Wellington's ever had between, um, 98 and 2010, you know, the town was buzzing. We've let the finances get away on us. We need to focus on our priorities and, and see that the, um, uh, core business is done. Um, the infrastructure is looked after and we can afford, uh, and we can cut wasteful spending. Um, we need to reduce the debt because that restricts, uh, other councils, uh, in the future as to what they can do. And rates didn't need to be at an affordable level. And I would suggest that at CPI or inflation level, no more. And we need to live with that budget. I don't want to see any more closed, no closed door meetings of council anymore. And I'm happy to be accountable and report quarterly on progress, um, uh, to, to the public of Wellington. I think that's what the council would do. We are the capital city. We need a team working together and we'll bring back the vibe, confidence and investment in Wellington. And make it a happy place again.
Okay, and Chris.
Um, thanks for that. I echo the thanks of everyone else for the, all those involved. Look, I'm a professional transport planner. I've been at the game for 40 years around the world. Uh, I know my stuff and I think I can contribute in that respect. And transport is an important issue in Wellington, across roads, across liaison with Greater Wellington Regional Council. And transport is an important issue in Wellington, across roads, across liaising with Greater Wellington Regional Council. And as I alluded to before, liaising with NZTA to get us a second Mount Victoria Tunnel with walking and cycling facilities. Cross-section might look something like this or it might look like something different. I don't care as long as those facilities are there. I've started a petition, 71 signatures in the last few hours. So sign that one and let's make sure that Wellington gets its fair share of transport infrastructure. Auckland's had its massive tunnels. Bill English said to me many years ago that the government was keen to invest in Wellington if Wellington knew what it wanted. But Let's Get Wellington Moving went astray for lack of leadership after Justin Lister and I left.
Okay, thank you for that. And now just, was it the voting housekeeping we'll kick off with first? The Motu Kaerangani Eastern Ward voters will be using the voting system single transferable vote. So when it comes to your vote, remember to sit there and make good use of your number ones, your number twos, your number threes and your number fours. In order for a councillor to get elected onto council, they need to achieve to exceed the quota. The quota for this one is the total number of votes divided by the number of positions plus one. In this case, it will be by four. So for a candidate to successfully be elected, they need to achieve 26% of the first preference in redistributed votes. So please make sure you think wisely about how you rank on your voting paper because your second and third and fourth preferences are equally as important and will help shape who are the top three candidates getting elected onto council. The other bit of housekeeping I would like to sit and bring up is that It's in the Ballot Productions is an independently funded nonprofit organisation and we rely on small dollar donations to sit there and bring their shows together. Today is an example of like we've had to scale back due to volunteer illness. However, our costs haven't gone away because of that. Our venue hire for today is $450 for the venue to bring on the two shows they've happened today. Our internet connection for Starlink is $14. Now, I'll be honest, today we are using my Coffee Carts router because I can't put it out on the dish. But the fixed cost is still there. We also have a $31 a month free, no, $31 per day weighted cost for the restream account. And our fuel allowance budget for today was $100 and $50 for refreshments. So any help with any small dollar donations that could even be done, give a little page through our event right ticket option of Koha without admission. Or you can also deposit funds directly into our It's in the Ballot bank account. You can find those details on our website. And if you want to support our project in a long-term capacity, feel free to join our Patreon page. And if you're one of our fellow YouTube subscribers, please feel free to sit down there and actually subscribe to the channel. As we say, we're about to put out an application again for partnership. Now, there is something we do also have. We have this merchandise. If you'd like to buy one of the It's in the Ballot hoodies here, which Laura has proudly made the design over, you can get them done through Print Mighty, a local t-shirt printing company on the Kapiti Coast. And if you'd also like to have the shirt for there, now I'll be honest, I am wearing this. No, I'm not stripping. One of these shirts here. So you could have an idea of what. So if you want to sit there and have a merchandise to feel part of the 2025 campaign, you can also sit there and buy one of the t-shirts or one of the hoodies. I'd like to also say thank you to all the candidates for making this work. At 11 o'clock today was when I got the phone call from Nick. And at nine o'clock this morning, I got the text message from Stacey to say, Stacey said, can't do remote editor. Can you find someone else to sit there and do it? And then at 11 o'clock was when Nick sat there and said, hey, I'm too sick to come. If I come today, you're not going to have me over the weekend. So I said to Nick, sit there, we'll figure out how to pull this off. And I'd like to also thank Laura there for sitting down there and coming to the rescue on her birthday to sit down here and make these shows happen. Let's make a hybrid remote show work because we have pulled it off. So thank you for doing that, Laura. My pleasure. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you, Sam. Round of applause for Sam, I reckon. What do you reckon? Come on.
Be impossible.
No, it's a really good idea, you know, and I hope it's well supported by the community. It's been a pleasure listening to every one of you, to be honest.
Thank you to our audience members who were initially going to come in person, who have joined us online and started chatting away in the chat there. Feel free to sit there, like, subscribe as all followers will go down very well. And if you want to join us tomorrow, we're going to be taking the big drive up to the Viking town of Denyvek. We'll be going from the Tarura constituency of Horizons Regional Council, followed by the Denyvek Community Board. Then the Tarura's got boring names for their wards, the North Ward. And then we'll be topped it off with the Tarura District Merrill Debate. And I think you'll be seeing Laura's going to be also there in person as well instead of running away in the good old lovely town of Ekituna.
Hey, Sam, can I make a suggestion?
What's that?
You get a pair of pants with the South Island on them. So you've got the whole country that's in it.
Oh, nice. Trying to find, was it? Printing for pants is an absolute mission because I wanted to have a set of shorts and a set of trousers that had the It's in the Ballot Outtake logo put through it. And unfortunately, I cannot find a place that does it. Yeah.
Just put half the South Island on each leg.
They'll be seen with the South Island on my arse. That won't feel right.
I don't know where you're going to put Stuart on, but yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, all the chattums because we've got to remember the chattums.
Do you remember the chattums?
Yes, yes. Otherwise we'll get told off by Paul Eagle. Yes. So thanks for joining us. For candidates, if you want to stay for post-show chats, we can have a couple of minutes netter afterwards. That always good. And we'll see all our lovely viewers tomorrow live from the Denyvek Town Hall. Have a good evening.